Like to start. Okay, thank you. I'd like to call together the February 1st, 2021 meeting of the Gig Harbor Planning and Building Committee. Call it to order, and I'd like to start with a roll call and just answer yes if you're present. Councilmember Franch.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Mayor Kuhn.
Yes.
Bob Larson, City Administrator.
Here.
Katrina Knudsen. Carl DeSantis. I'm sorry. Paul Wright.
Yes.
Michelle Thomas.
Here.
And we have a guest, Josh Wees from our lobbyist organization, the Gordon Thomas Honeywell. Welcome, and I'm Councilmember Bob Heim for the recording sake. Okay, why don't we move on to approval of the January 4th, 2021 meeting minutes?
Move to approve the minute.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. Okay, the agenda items. We're gonna do a little switch here because we've got Carl Wees here with us. Not Carl Wees, I'm talking about Josh Wees. And understand you'd like to go first, Katrina, with that topic on the legislative items.
Ask Josh Wees to be here today, and I really thank him for coming in on such short notice. Due to the prep of last week's council retreat, I've not had adequate time to come up to speed, as they would say, with some of these GMA planning-related bills, and I know that Josh, we've provided several comments on several of the bills to Josh for the city's behalf, and I thought it'd be really good if Josh, if he went through just an overview of kind of what bills are going where, what we think is gonna collect steam, and where we should focus our commenting efforts.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Josh, for being here.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Okay, take it away, Josh.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Heim. I'll answer it to Carl if you would like to call me that. It really doesn't bother me. I've heard all sorts of weird pronunciations of my name with the testifying I do at the legislature. And nicely done this morning, Mayor Kuhn. It was good to see you in front of the House Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, sure. So I will admit, I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to try and answer questions. I didn't have much time to do any preparation. We are in kind of the part of session where it's really hard to tell exactly what is real and what isn't real. We are two weeks away from the first cutoff, which is the date to get bills out of policy committee, and if they don't get out of policy committee, they'll be considered dead. So we're hearing lots of bills this week, and then they're gonna start shifting over to voting bills out of committee. So we're probably pretty close to having seen most of the bills that we're going to see. I don't expect the universe of bills to get that much bigger, but right now, it's still a little bit difficult to tell what's got legs and what doesn't. I kind of, there's so many planning bills out there, I kind of thought about putting them in categories. At least a couple categories. The first one has to do with adding additional requirements around salmon preservation and climate change. Climate change is House Bill 1099, and salmon is House Bill 1117. And both of them have been talked about for at least a year now. There's been a fair amount of engagement of the local government associations on them. In fact, House Bill 1117, which is the salmon one, includes really strong language about local governments not having to do any of the work unless there's funding provided. Both of the associations, counties and cities, are actually in support of that measure because the language is so protective. From a substantive perspective, I should also have said at the very outset, a lot of these, we have, I have not spent a lot of time getting into a lot of the detail about them. And one of the things I know that I said in an email before, I really appreciate whenever Katrina and other staff have a chance to look at bills because it just really helps me when we're responding to some of the different kinds of bills at this point, understand what they do at a detailed level. I know that sounds dumb, but a lot of times, you know, these bills are really long and extensive, and it really is hard if I haven't worked in a planning office before. So it's hard to tell exactly what the impact is, so we really appreciate that. The climate change bill has passed out of committee. It does also include some unfunded mandate language protective of local governments, but it's not as strong as 1117. The associations are still very, very concerned about this. It probably would not have a huge impact on Gig Harbor because you are part of the Puget Sound, PSRC, Puget Sound Regional Council. And PSRC obviously is of, as part of their planning process includes climate change as one of the considerations that you have to plan for. Having said that, you know, there's a lot more detail in there about specifics you have to do and how you have to do it. So that is what, that is one, I think, does have potential to pass this year. I think it could get through the process. There's a lot of energy around climate change this legislative session. So I would pay attention to those two. There are a number of bills that have, oh, sorry, Councilmember Franch.
Yeah, I don't know, is, who's watching the raise the hand deal?
I can watch for it, sorry.
Okay, yeah, I just, I don't wanna, you know, jump in on you, but so is that climate bill, that 1099, so that has a lot of different provisions than the transportation one that has to do with carbon emissions and?
Yeah, it's really very different. They're not even really getting at the same issue. They both have to do with carbon, but the transportation proposals that you're seeing are both, whether it's a cap and trade system or a tax, revenue tax, carbon tax proposal, they're both trying to get at ways to make money off of carbon and/or reduce overall carbon emissions. Think about it from the perspective of like cars that are, you know, in your car, you're emitting carbon. The GMA bill is much more requiring local governments to take actions within their comprehensive plan that they think across their jurisdiction will have an impact on reducing carbon. So transportation planning to try and encourage, you know, less driving, more walking, more multimodal, those types of things. So they're coming at the same problem from different angles. I hope that makes sense.
One's more about revenue and one's about policy?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
On accessory dwelling units is another big topic that the legislature for the last, this is, I think, the fourth year that we've seen legislation on accessory dwelling units. This is being driven by the Site Lane Institute, which is a national environmental land use planning organization. It's also being driven by realtors, realtors and builders, I guess I should say, who are looking at accessory dwelling units as another way to generate business within the building community. And the idea being that they're encouraged from a housing perspective because they think that affordable housing in the Puget Sound area can be aided if there's just additional units out there that are available for people. This year, House Bill 1337 is the current proposal that seems to have the most steam, unlike past years that were mandatory for local governments. This one is an incentive-based program. And so you're not required to do anything. There's a big, long laundry list of things that if a local government does do, then they are able to access different revenue incentives. The conversation right now is that the incentives in the bill aren't sufficient. Nobody thinks that they'll be sufficient to actually get local governments to take any of the actions, and the list of actions that they've included are so onerous that they're pretty unlikely to be used. So that is an ongoing conversation between the advocates for ADUs and local governments. Councilmember Franch.
Yeah, so the, that was the one, there's two, right? There's two different bills. One of them had, I believe in the early language, that was gonna give a sales tax credit back for the cost of building the ADUs. The other one, I think, had to do with more making it mandatory to allow a wide range of these ADUs. And specifically what, it seemed like, and I don't, I was just looking for my, I don't, different sheet of paper. I was writing a bunch of notes on these different bills. I can't find it right now, but the, like you said, 1337 gives cities and municipalities an option. It seemed like the other bill had to do with mandating things.
Right, right.
So which, which one, are they both, do you think, have a good chance, or is one falling off the table?
If I had to put money on one of the two horses, I would put it on 1337. I think there is the possibility of getting to some compromise. The legislature has not been willing, at least so far, to jam a mandate-based approach down local governments' throats. So I think that has some possibility. And I know, you know, there's been a wide debate amongst us at the advocacy level about, you know, do we recommend supporting an incentive-based approach that doesn't work? And then the legislature comes back and says, well, we gave you an incentive, it doesn't work, and now in two to four years, we're gonna, you know, jam a mandatory approach down your throat. It's really a conundrum. This, I don't know that there's a good answer. We've been fighting ADUs for so long now that, you know, it feels like something is going to pass eventually. So I think 1337 will be the vehicle that we have this conversation around, but I could be wrong.
Thank you.
There is, there are two bills, and I know I saw, Mayor Kuhn, you had some concerns about a couple bills out there that are aimed at allowing counties to permit and regulate detached ADUs within the unincorporated urban growth area. Right now, counties are only allowed to have attached ADUs. But in a lot of jurisdictions, what happens is people will build, they'll get something permitted as a garage or a shop or whatever, and then they'll just convert it after they get the permits to an ADU. So I know a lot of counties are saying, you know, just let us allow detached ADUs, again, this is only in the UGA, and regulate them. I don't think either of these bills are gonna go forward. They are brought forward by the realtors. They are, and counties. They are opposed by future-wise and the environmental community. I just don't think with the current majority that they're gonna move.
Josh, with that bill, I did have a few moments to look at that today, and I will be putting a response to you and Bob and Kit.
Cool.
I think from a city perspective, we would want to oppose, I think it's Senate Bill 5221, is that correct?
Right, yep.
Just reading that bill, and again, I wanna read it again, but it, the sister bill to that passed in the previous session, I believe, that, you know, kind of incentivized ADUs in the urban area. It's my understanding that Senate Bill 5221 is to allow ADUs on rural properties. It's not within the unincorporated UGAs. I think it's tailored toward the rural area.
Well, that, let's look again, Katrina. That would definitely be different than my understanding.
Okay, yeah, we can.
But you could definitely be right about that, so let's, let's make sure we're correct.
So, yeah, I'm gonna put together just a short synopsis of my thoughts on that and a position. I think likely the city would oppose that just due to the fact of inconsistency with GMA. We want to increase density in the urban area and decrease it in the rural area.
And you know what? I'm looking at the bill report right now. You're right, it is outside of the urban growth area. My apologies for that. Yeah.
It takes a team to get all of this.
Yeah, there's a lot of, lot of stuff flying around. I appreciate that.
So, yeah, look for an email on that.
It looks like they're finding every way they can to buy, to to change the, all the laws they put in to keep rural rule. They're just pushing it everywhere they can to change the rules without changing the heart of the rule.
Well, it's interesting, Mayor, sorry, Chair, to just take over with a thought that I had, but, you know, there's been so many bills, as Josh has indicated over the last, you know, four years, about accessory dwelling units and housing affordability, that, you know, it seems that everyone's trying to come at the problem of housing affordability in a different way and not necessarily looking at the whole problem and how we can address it, you know, within the confines of our existing, you know, laws and programs. And, you know, I think until that approach is taken regionally through things such as shape, you know, what Gig Harbor is involved in and other good things, then I think people will continue to try to solve this problem piecemeal. So that's just my two cents.
I would agree. They're just trying to figure out how they can, how they can actually make money off it, instead of really addressing the problem.
Correct.
So I will just say also a little bit on this theme, their housing is definitely one of the major themes this session. And this is, this is, when I say I have a hard time predicting this one, I really have no idea how this is gonna go. But there's five more, four more bills out there that have to do with planning and housing. One is 1220, one's 1232, one's 52, I should be telling you what these do. 1220 basically updates and deals with your housing goals within the Growth Manager Act, so it requires more specific housing goals in your plans. 1232, I think, is somewhat similar, but it hasn't even gotten heard. 1220 has been heard and is scheduled for executive action, so that's probably going to at least move forward in the House. 5269 is one of the more interesting bills that I've probably ever seen. It basically says cities, you and counties actually too, here are a bunch of policies that are, that you, if you implement at the local level to increase density and its residential density, you can essentially exempt the value within the area that you've taken these actions. So basically, you create a little zone. You take these pro-density, pro-housing options within this zone. You can, the property tax value that is generated from that new development is exempted from the 1% property tax limit for a period of three years. So it's basically like, we've talked, Councilmember Franch, I know your favorite subject, the tax increment finance issue. It's basically like a little TIF type of zone used as incentive to encourage cities and counties to grow density. I have no idea. I mean, it's a novel idea. It's been heard. I will be surprised if it moves forward, but we'll see. There was another one, House Bill 1157. This is a similar idea where cities and counties that do certain planning activities to encourage density, residential density, they are then allowed a payment out of the state portion of the real estate excise tax just as a financial cash incentive. You know, that's another pretty novel idea. We haven't ever seen the state show any interest whatsoever in giving up their REIT revenue. That one seems like a pretty hard sale. I know that the state budget's in better shape than we thought it was going to be, but it's still not in great shape, and the budget writers aren't gonna wanna get, give any of their revenue away. So I wouldn't bank on that one either. So the, just the housing conversation is just a big mishmash, and we don't, it's really hard to know what's going on. Councilmember Franch, I see your hand.
Yeah, what about, there was talk a month or two ago about kind of an omnibus GMA bill?
It seems like that has pretty much gone away. The Ruckles House Center, right, was meeting with people all through the summer. They, there was no consensus around that recommendation or those conversations, and so no bill came forward out of that, which is, I think, a big relief. The one, actually, one of the bills I was gonna talk about next is kind of related to many of the things that were talked about this summer. It's House Bill 1241, and it allows cities and counties to do updates on a 10-year cycle rather than an eight-year cycle. But the, and that's a good thing, and that was one of the things that cities and counties this summer, and that Ruckles House conversation, were really pushing for. But it, in exchange for that, you are now required, any city smaller than 7,500 in population, which is not Gig Harbor, anybody bigger than 7,500 has to have an annual work plan for implementing your comprehensive plan, and you have to report on your progress on that work plan every five, midway through. So if it's a 10-year update, you have to update them at five years, or you have to report at five years. So there's a fair amount of, you know, bureaucratic work in terms of documenting how you're gonna be doing your work to implement your comprehensive plan. I know that some of the larger counties, and probably I would assume larger cities also, already do this kind of work planning. So it's a net win for them, but I know that smaller jurisdictions, including smaller counties, don't do this kind of work, and the associations are both concerned about this bill. But there's that, again, to Councilmember Franch, to your point about the GMA work group, some of those concepts were talked about this summer and got included in that bill, but it wasn't the sort of big omnibus bill. I do think that's one that, Katrina, as you're focusing your time and energy, taking a look at that one could be worth your time. It's 1241. The last one I wanted to mention, and I know Katrina and I have talked about this already, is House Bill 1440, and it's not a GMA bill. Shoot, sorry, I lost you guys. Hold on. There we go. It's not a GMA bill, but it's a, it's a planning permitting bill, and it's 1441. It has to do with small cell telecom facilities, and it's a huge preemption bill brought by the telecom industry to make permitting for 5G and small cell much easier. That, don't think has been heard yet.
Is that an optional one for cities?
Nope, not at all.
Did you say 1440 or 41?
1440. It's just been introduced. It hasn't even been scheduled for a hearing yet. I know a bunch of us are getting together tomorrow to talk about this, and I'll have a better sense after that conversation about whether it's live or not. The thing to keep in mind, I mentioned that cutoff is in two weeks. What we, what we've seen so far in the virtual session is that they have a pretty good ability to move bills out, hear bills in committee, and to move bills out of committee. We really don't know, you know, the legislative process has a series of steps, and it operates as a filter, and it's, you know, like a funnel. It just narrows down increasingly the number of bills that make it through. We think that when they get to the floor, they're gonna have a much harder time moving bills, and so that step in the, in the screen, I think, is gonna be a lot more severe than it has been in the past. So we're thinking a lot of these are gonna get filtered out, but it's a little hard to tell right now which ones are gonna be. I would be very surprised if any, you know, massive policy change gets through this session, but again, I could be wrong. So that's kind of what I wanted, thought I would talk about, that you're clearly tracking some, what's going on yourselves. If there's other questions, I'm happy to try and answer.
Okay, any other questions? Fantastic. Thank you, Josh, for attending today and updating on the and thank you for the info on the Fortune Auto Bill.
Oh, yeah.
The famous, let's, let's, let's implement affordable housing and the city will pay for it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Good to see you guys. Take care.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, now we'll go back to the regular agenda, and we'll start with the regional planning framework, the PSRC and the PCRC. And Katrina, you and Carl have got this one, I believe.
Yes. Thank you, Chair. The, the committee, the last meeting and the meeting previous to that, had several questions about PSRC and PCRC and how we all fit in together and subcommittees, et cetera. Carl put together a memo that was included in your packet.
Yep.
And so just noting how much we have to cover today and how much time we have to cover all of this information. Carl can briefly go over the highlights of those. We also included in two PowerPoints that were, one that was given by the Puget Sound Regional Council and one that was given.
PSRC.
Yeah, the PCRC.
Yes, RC.
Paul Ingram, I think.
Yes, and so Chair, we can go over the Vision 2050 PowerPoint today if you'd like, or we could just, for informational purposes, have the committee go over on their own time and ask questions at the next meeting, whatever you'd like.
If there's any, if anybody wants to go over in any detail, please say so now. I think the only thing that I'd really like to point out was in the one that's labeled Pierce County Regional Council, the Countywide Planning Policy Update. If you dig in there about, I forget how many pages back it is, maybe one, they obviously didn't number the pages, two, I think it's page five or six. There's a timetable in there on Vision 2050 and GMA. The updates, and they give a timeline in there. I think that's the one thing I'd like to, to cover. If you can pull that, I don't know, Carl, do you have that, that PowerPoint? Can you get the screen up?
See if I can share.
I can. Do you have it, Katrina, or I can find it?
Okay. Does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's the, let's see, that's the PSR, PSRC version, and I was looking at the Pierce County Regional Council, the Countywide Planning Policy Update. Yeah, there we go. Go, go back a couple pages, several pages from there. Keep going back. Back, keep going back. Going back, okay, wait a minute. Go for.
You just went by it.
Yeah. Right there, okay. That's the one that caught my attention, particularly all those things with 2021, be they December or just 2021. And I believe it fits into our discussion, in fact, I know it fits into our discussion last time on the annexation, the build land use and billable lands report, and, and the overall target for the, leading to the target for our coming objectives in terms of growth.
Can you make that a little bigger?
I cannot.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're, they're all aiming toward kind of a gigantic wrap-up at the end of 2021 of all the local stuff. If you look at that magic diagram under that they call number four, what they're really looking to do is to get things locked down at the county level and get most of the, most of the items wrapped up in the, in the city targets, if you will, at least the population employment allegation this year. I don't have the final date as far as the Pierce County Council, and then ultimately the PSRC approval. It's sometimes in 2022, but I don't know when that is. Maybe you know better than I do, Katrina.
I don't know that yet. If I may chime in for a moment, there's really three things under this agenda topic that I'd like council to be made aware of. Number one is we do have the countywide planning Number one is we do have the countywide planning policies coming up that's shown on this slide. We do have, uh, our Pierce County Planner that is going to be coming to this committee in, at your March meeting to talk specifically about the buildable lands report and the countywide planning policies. So those two discussions, we would like to punt until March, uh, when our, our planner can be here, who's the project manager and be able to talk those through. What's important about this slide, and it does show that framework of how growth management fix, fits into our local comprehensive plans. And it, it kind of gets to the question that this committee was asking is how do they all relate to one another? And, and what's the process? And so, you know, from the outer band here, you can see that there is a Growth Management Act. That's kind of the overarching that affects everything we do. Then you come into Vision twenty fifty and the multi-county planning policies at the next level. Multi-county being between King County, Pierce County, Snohomish and Kitsap. Those are our multi-county wide planning policies. And then further in is our countywide planning policies. So that's how within Pierce County, all of the jurisdictions within Pierce County plan together to again, implement the outer bands, right? So how are we gonna, as a county, how are we all going to plan together to implement Vision twenty fifty and the multi-county planning policies? And ultimately, how is that consistent with the Growth Management Act? And then at the very center is our local comprehensive plan. And again, that has to again, be consistent with the three outer bands, but also that's where we can come in and have some local deference to how we're, we're planning. And so that's where we get into, you know, allocations of population unemployment. It's where we, um, get to different policy items and even down to, you know, our long-range work plan that we talked about. Um, so I hope that this chart at least gives a little bit of clarity of how things bounce back and forth, noting that they cannot be inconsistent with each other, but they are all distinct and different.
All right. And any questions on that? Cause I, I had a couple. Uh, one of them was the, starting with, with the, um, Vision two thousand fifty. That starts in calendar year two thou, the, the, the targets are based starting in calendar year two thousand seventeen, if I remember correctly. That's the starting point of it. Okay. And, and I'm not sure whether it's January first or December thirty-first. All the things I've seen just says two thousand seventeen. And if I remember correctly, the, the, the due date in terms of being the target is actually two thousand and forty-four, if I remember correctly. I think it's in that timeframe. Uh, it was the final, actually, it's not two thousand fifty, it's two thousand forty-four. Um, but there were some questions in, in my mind, and one of them was if it's two thousand seventeen, uh, do we know what we have accumulated in terms of employment and basically population growth and building growth from two thousand seventeen to like now?
Yes.
This could be viewed as a, uh, a bonus, I would call it, the way we've been growing. Okay.
So Carl, feel free to jump in here, but something I'd like to point out, and I know it can be definitely confusing, especially when PSRC and PCRC are, the acronyms are so close together. Something that's important for the, um, committee to remember is that they're two distinct processes. So Vision twenty fifty, again, it's an outer band from this inner countywide planning policy work. And at the countywide planning policy and in implementing our comprehensive plan, we are planning from twenty twenty-four to twenty forty-four in our next comp plan update.
Okay.
The PCRC out year is twenty forty-four, and that would be the twenty years from twenty twenty-four. That is different than Vision twenty fifty. They plan, you know, starting with Vision twenty twenty, back when I was, whenever, um, you know, twenty twenty, then it went to twenty twenty, then twenty forty, and now it's going out to twenty fifty. And so there's different out years for each of those processes. And so the numbers, we're not going to be able to compare them as apples to oranges because they'll each have a different um, base year and a different out year. And so although the data within them are similar and we're comparing the same things, it matters in terms of when you're beginning to evaluate data and when you're on the out. So to answer your question, the twenty forty-four is the out year for the countywide planning policies and what we'll plan to in our comp plan. Although twenty fifty again is the out year for the Vision twenty fifty.
Okay. Does, are the GMA final targets or goals out there yet?
No, the Office of Financial Management is expected to work on those this year and they'll come forward to, um, be adopted by the Pierce County Council with input from the cities.
Okay.
Supposed to come out in, um, after, it looks like they're going to be late is the last word I heard on that. So what the numbers have come out in twenty twenty-two, they were hoping some time around or expecting some time around April. But now it looks like, uh, the last I heard from Paul Ingram, uh, yes, RC is that they're going to be later in the year.
So we're going to continue to monitor that. And the other important question that you asked, Councilmember Heinz, is are we looking at what has been done since the base year? And the answer to that is yes, the twenty seventeen, I believe, was chosen because it's the year that they started working on Vision twenty fifty. So again, you have to start from somewhere and they make some, you know, assumptions in order to get us up to the current year that we're in. From a, a practical standpoint, in our growth work and our buildable lands work, Carl's been working directly with Pierce County on our actual development data. Uh, and, uh, you know, what's been developed and what has not. So we will be starting, again, it, it's not going to be a hundred percent perfect because this is an art, not a science. But, you know, because development happens every day, people are born, people die. Um, so it's, it's not going to be perfect, but we do, in terms of our development, we will be starting from, um, a base.
Okay.
So we will, we will have taken.
Questions there, Councilmember Franch, whether you're in.
Yeah. Um, so could you go to the one that? I think the, yeah. So in looking at that one, you know, I was looking at that, in Kitsap County has got zero.
Under cities and towns.
Yeah. And so within Kitsap County, again, these, the, um, the sections have changed. So before, in the previous Vision twenty, the previous vision, for instance, high-capacity transit communities did not exist, right? And so it essentially, many different jurisdictions were moved into a different section. And so Kitsap County then just does not have any jurisdictions that fit into the city and towns category.
Well, not, not Port Orchard.
Um, I'm not sure. I would have to look at and see where Porter Ture fell.
Well, they, they had have gone somewhere. I mean, you know, because it's broken down by, um, Pierce, Kitsap and King, you know, and then you go across what, you know, like in, in Pierce County, they've got the municipal, um, geez, I gotta get my magnifying glass out. The metropolitan cities, core cities on down the line. And, you know, there's so many of each one of those different types of jurisdictions across the line. And in, in Pierce County, the same thing. And then you get to Kitsap and, you know, it's the last, the cities and towns in the, um, urban unincorporated, they're at zero. Well, six percent on the urban unincorporated.
Yeah.
So we can, we can find that answer out too. Um, I do think it's an interesting data point, although potentially not germane to our discussion today, but we will find out the, the answer to that for you.
Yeah.
And just to follow up on Councilmember Heinz, so do you believe that we will be able to get any credit for the, the growth that's i- i- as far as these po- population allocations, will we get, be able to get any credit for the last three years?
Um, so the process doesn't work that way. We don't receive credit. So we.
Well, I know that wasn't the exact right planning term for it, but.
Yeah. And we'll get into the growth, uh, under a different, um, a different agenda item here.
Well, but doesn't, does this chart have anything to do with the population allocations? I'm assuming it does.
So again, this is, what you're seeing here is the regional growth strategy and that's the, one of the outer bands. So after GMA, that's this Vision twenty fifty and outer band. So the information from this, this is again, the regional for Kings, Snohomish, Pierce and Kitsap, and then broken down into smaller geographies. That feeds into our countywide planning policies. So the only thing that we're concerned about right now is our Pierce County share. So this orange-ish line here. And how that's broken out and what we're really, um, you know, what we're here to talk about is really the cities and towns, the seven percent, twenty-five thousand, correct me if I'm wrong, Carl. This orange here is really our sector of the pie that we get to focus on. And Carl's going to kind of lead us through a discussion of that later. Now, again, Gig Harbor grew and we, and Carl will go through how much we grew. Um, we don't get credit for, it, it doesn't, it, the process isn't set up that way, right? So we grew a certain amount. Um, we have a certain amount of land left over within our city, within our urban growth area. And really the calculation, we don't get to subtract future folks because we outgrew during a certain period. Now, once, when we get into that discussion, and again, Chair, I apologize, we're getting a little off topic here. But, um, you know, we can talk about how much growth, you know, we're going to take. But per se, we don't get credit because the city, um, outgrew what its projection was.
So when Councilmember Heinz referring to that two thousand seventeen to two thousand forty-four timeframe, the last three years are already baked into that?
I wouldn't say that they are, they have been, they've been, they are now, instead of proposed dwelling units, they are now actual citizens of Gig Harbor. So instead of having our ten thousand five hundred and eighty that we were, when we added in the eighteen and nineteen, now we're at eleven thousand two hundred and forty or some number like that. So instead of being potential units, now they're citizens of Gig Harbor. And so that's where our baseline becomes is we've taken them in and now they're citizens. They are a person within our city and that becomes our base. And then from that base, we have these new numbers. Does that make sense?
That unfortunately, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? So what, I, I guess what I'm saying is, I, I think we've agreed to, to, um, go through the, both those papers uh, independently. I think it's mostly informative. I don't think there's any big secrets in there. Uh, and just to bring you up to speed, as, uh, Katrina was saying, on the framework of this thing in terms of how this stuff flows through the system, okay? Both the Puget Sound Regional Conference and then the, uh, Pierce County, uh, actions.
And, you know, Chair, I would recommend the committee members go through specifically the memo that Carl put together. Because it really goes through and breaks down the different sub areas of each agency and different groups that we can get involved in. And I say we, both from an elected and a staff position. And I think that, that has been something that we have lacked in the city is representation or, uh, willingness to attend these meetings from folks on the city's behalf. And so us participating in these meetings and having the information only makes our planning decisions more informed and we can tailor them more to our city.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Carl. That's, that's, uh, very helpful.
Are you talking about the two pages?
Yeah.
Um, so the letter to Jessica?
No. No.
No.
It's, it's addressed to the Planning and Building Committee. It's dated February first from Carl. It's three pages.
Yeah.
Got it. Yeah. It's really good for acronym control for those of us that can't remember what, what all this stuff represents. He actually gives definitions on most of these items here, what the GMCC and the PS.
Got it.
So.
I, I have a, a few questions for Carl on that.
Okay.
Um, in the very first paragraph, um, it, it, we, I see that, uh, PSRC, blah, blah, blah. And we've got tribal governments in there.
Mm-hmm.
Now, do they, are they forced to plan by this document or is it obstacle for them?
It is, uh, well, as far as comprehensive planning goes, it's optional. I know that the Pualup tribe right now is actually, uh, working on developing their first comprehensive plan. And so they are working with, um, within this regional framework, uh, to, uh, to develop that plan. And so in that sense, then, uh, they will be using these, uh, these numbers. I, I think the ultimate answer to your question is though, is that they, I do not believe that they are mandated under PSRC the same way that other local governments are. Katrina might know more about that than me, but I believe that that's, that's true. Now, they are, they're mentioned here because they are an agency that, um, that works with PSRC and works with the other, uh, regional governments and agencies. Um, so they are a stakeholder in, in what's in, in the, in the regional planning framework. Um, but as far as a decision maker within that framework, I, they're, they're, I don't believe they are.
Well, it, you know, if they have a seat at the table, which apparently they do by looking at this, it seems like they should follow the rules. And I don't believe that they're forced to follow rules because they're a sovereign nation.
It, it certainly, they certainly do, uh, work under a different set of laws, no doubt. Uh, but they, but they have a seat at the table because they're a regional, they are, they are a regional government. Um, they have, they have a lot of, um, a lot of what they do has implications on what happens in the region. Uh, and I think vice versa, you know, kind of like, I, I think you might put it in the same boat as, uh, the local transportation agencies or the port, for instance.
Well, uh, yeah, I, I don't know about that. And then on the second page, uh, the Transportation Policy Board.
Yes.
How many members, how many members are there on that?
Uh, I can look it up. I didn't give you numbers on that, I guess. I'm sorry. I can, about, I, uh, I could update this and, and add that if that's information that, um, council members would like to have.
Well, I mean, i- if it's on their site, if, if you believe it's on the website, I could, I could go on there and, and save you the time of doing it. And if I don't find it, then I'll get back to you.
Okay, that sounds good. That's what I was going to say too, is just a really quick aside from what Katrina had said earlier, uh, is that all of, you know, you can go on to PSRC's website, uh, and look up the members of all these organizations, he's on, who's on, uh, the number that are there, the vacancies, all that stuff. It's all, it's all listed there and I could make a note for myself to send you out.
No, 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 that's okay. It, it, I'll, I'll, I'll take, I'll do that on my own time. And then if I have, can't find something, then I'll get, get with you. Thanks.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And along with that, I appreciate that Councilmember Franch, and if we can help put you in touch with anybody, um, any of the committee members, if you're interested in a particular, um, topic or anything, we can put you in touch with the correct person at the correct agency.
Thank you.
Okay. The, the other item I, I mentioned is they, they talk about the, the executive board of the PSRC. We are not members of the executive board of the PSRC. We were, were a, um, a fraction of the General Assembly, put that way, uh, for the PSRC. Although PSRC is pretty good about coming to the Pierce County Regional Council, Council meetings and advising us on what's going on. That's primarily for the, the Tacoma's and, and that particular crowd. Okay? And on the third page, all I would say, so you don't believe I'm playing hooky on you here, on the Pierce County Regional Council. Okay, and on the third page, all I would say, so you don't believe I'm playing hooky on you here, on the Pierce County Regional Council. We actually meet monthly, okay? They they don't mention that, but we do meet monthly, okay? And uh, again, uh, land use, uh, land items are a big one. And my, I would say transportation is number one called. It's um, it's probably the most talked about item in the kind of regional conference. And again, because we are on the other side of the bridge. Uh, we don't get involved in many of those discussions. It's particularly, it's the interconnected communities. Uh, State Route uh one sixty-seven is a great example. The moment you say one sixty-seven, you've got Pualup. Uh, you've got other communities, and I can't remember them all, Sumner. Uh, Buckley, I can go right down the line in terms of all the the organizations that are involved. And they have found that if they coordinate together on certain things, they can uh. Uh, plan together and influence together certain things. So that's what's going on there. Okay, Jim.
No.
Okay, you got your hand up there.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay, and thank you, Carl. It's it's a good document. It really explains what's going on. Now I know what all those acronyms mean, but I'm still gonna hang you up with a paper just for reference.
So Bob, Bob, one thing, since you mentioned transportation. Uh, Bob Larson and I did call Warren uh Hendrickson from the Aviation Committee again. Just because they that that list, that summary uh finished before they got the letter from Pierce County. So I let Warren know that Pierce County had sent the letter and next time that they meet. Would they uh, would they reflect that that letter was there? Um, and that Gig Harbor would still like them to take us out and to, they could always amend it. Uh, I didn't ask him to send us anything, but Bob Larson was in the room. And Warren acknowledged it, that when they do meet, they're probably gonna narrow it down to two. And the big thing they want is uh public support that they don't have. And um the ability for commercial, which they really don't have. So anyway, just so you know, when you go back to PSRC, if it comes up.
Good, thanks for the update. Uh, that's for, I wondered how that was gonna work called. Because their objective was to have five at this at this point. And with taking us out, they're down to four. And I I don't know if that gives them a black mark in terms of their committee work or what, but. Uh, I was afraid they were just gonna leave us on there for appearance purposes, but somebody may take it seriously and say, hey. Keep them still in the running.
Right. Well, hopefully they don't, but if not, at least they know that we've told them. They they have that.
Okay, great. Okay, Katrina, where are we on the agenda? We've we've uh we've talked about numerous items here and I can't even figure out where we are, to be quite honest.
You're muted, Katrina.
I think we're somewhere between three and four, I think.
So again, just wanted to do a time check. We're about an hour into our meeting. If we can be, the agenda has us, I believe, till four thirty, although we could go till five if necessary. We have. Three topics left. One is the population target setting. The other. Uh, next would be Pierce County Comprehensive Plan Amendment Updates, which I believe there's many questions on. And then again, just a an overview of the long-range planning work program that was discussed at the council retreat.
Great, okay, let's proceed along that line then.
All right.
Well, hopefully no one has a post four thirty appointment they have to go to. Great, oh.
I do actually, so. But I can go till five.
Okay.
That's the latest I can go.
Okay, five's it. All right, go. Carl, you're on, I think.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Himes. Uh, let me try and share my screen here and see how this goes. Venture.
A quick note to council, we're all working on new um computers, so. Quick apologies if things aren't running quite as smoothly as they had before. We're all getting used to our new equipment, so.
Well, if we ever get our laptops, we'll be part of the crowd. Few months.
Okay, so um I'm I've got a slideshow here for you. It's about ten, eleven slides or so. Uh, I'm gonna run through it kind of quickly and then. Um, and then you can have some discussion after that, if that works for you, Chair.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so uh population growth targets, uh, our twenty forty-four target setting process that we've been working on with uh. Uh, Pierce County and their consultant, um, AHBL, that has been kind of uh running the show and facilitating the meetings. And things around this topic. Um, first slide here, uh, just really quickly, the same thing that Katrina had.
You were on a roll. I apologize for interrupting.
Oh, thank you for doing so. If you can't see, it's not gonna do anybody any good. One second here.
Are you on a different computer, Katrina?
I am, yes.
Your your audio is not as crisp, uh, as loud as normal.
I have noted that as well. Thank you. I'm gonna work with Keith and Heidi to correct that.
Does this show my screen now? Can you see my screen now? This, are you seeing the slides?
No, you can hit the green share screen button.
Uh, we can hear, I can hear pretty well.
Ah, there we go.
Oh, is that better? Okay, good. Okay, and then if I do this, can you still see that?
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, great. Okay, okay. Sorry about that.
One slide at a time.
Yeah. Okay, so back to the title slide. Uh, so uh here, regional planning, this is the same slide that uh same thing that you were looking at with Katrina earlier, same idea. Um, you know, working from Growth Management Act into our local comprehensive plans. Um, the work that we're doing here with the target setting is someplace in between, you know, the countywide planning policies and the vision twenty fifty and the multi-county planning policies that are informing. Uh, informing those uh growth targets and ultimately. Uh, to be used by the local jurisdictions when we're working on our local comprehensive plans in uh twenty twenty-four. Uh, so you know, the reason we do this is that it's law, Growth Management Act requires uh that we look at growth targets. Um, and adopt twenty-year growth targets. Um. These are used then, like I said before, in our local comprehensive plans and they inform the land use transportation and the capital facilities, oh, for the most part. Uh, Vision twenty fifty provides uh for a few things, but one of them and the one that's most germane to this topic is the regional growth strategy. Um, and this provides uh the guidance for the distribution of our population and employment growth within that four-county central Puget Sound region. And that I've thrown some regional goals here that it supports, uh, you know, environmental impacts. Regional mobility, of course, uh, investments, job growth, economic development, so on. The Vision twenty fifty was adopted, um, I think maybe Councilmember Himes mentioned it earlier, uh, October twenty ninth, twenty twenty. So the regional growth strategy itself um really is the second bullet here. Uh, you know, it assumes sixty-five percent of the region's population growth and seventy-five percent of the region's job growth is going to occur. In those regional growth centers in your high-capacity transit. So. Uh, just as Councilmember Himes was describing earlier, it's really a long, really focused on those um areas where. You have a lot of connectivity between urban areas and those urban centers, most especially. So the Pierce County Population Allocation Process that we're going through right now um is uh, like I said, is being informed by Vision twenty fifty. And it's using the PRC, PSRC's regional macroeconomic forecast. Now, it 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 will also utilize the Office of Financial Management's uh population forecast, but because those haven't been released yet. Uh, the assumptions right now are based on this regional macroeconomic forecast. Um, these, you know, these allocations have to be consistent with that growth strategy we just discussed in Vision twenty fifty, so working our way out or in, sorry, from the GMA. Uh, through Vision twenty fifty. Our target year that we're working on is twenty forty-four, so that's what we're planning for. Uh, that's our planning horizon that's being used, and that's what we'll use uh when we go to update our comprehensive plan in twenty twenty-four. And the base year for this data is twenty twenty, um, and that data is coming from uh is informed by the Office of Management and Annual Population. So this slide is taken from um guidance that was provided to us at the Growth Management Ordinating Committee. And so it's a lot like what we were talking about before, so this is kind of drilling down now into uh to the to the county level. And looking at what our um percentage of the growth share would be on a county-by-county basis, so taking the entire. Projected population for twenty forty-four and then sort of breaking that out amongst the four-county region. And saying, here's who's gonna take what. And so you can see here, Pierce County would take twenty-one percent of that growth, so. You know, starting from that base year of twenty twenty and nine hundred thousand seven hundred. And then adding in two sixty-four, seven eight, or that is being forecasted to that regional macro. So then this slide drills down just a little bit further. This is getting to uh what we're kind of discussing a little bit earlier, but this is just Pierce County-centric, so we're really just talking about Pierce County. Aggregating all of that data now and boiling it down into this. Um, even even further into these uh these regional geographies. That Vision twenty fifty has laid out. And so Gig Harbor falls into the cities and towns geography. And so we are a part of that seven percent, so which seven percent equates to about eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty-five persons. So eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty-five is kind of the the. Estimated number that we're trying to get to um on a, from a, from the regional geography category perspective.
Does that include Kitsap County?
This does not include Kitsap County. This is just Pierce County.
Pierce County, Pierce County, Pierce County cities that fall into that category, okay? We're in there, Pualups in there, uh, Sumners in there, uh, I can go right down the line, Fife is in there. Um, in fact, I think there's close to twenty of us all together, if I remember correctly.
Well, we have, in the cities and towns, we have, oh, sorry, Katrina.
Oh, so again, with what Carl's showing here on this slide is the. Aggregate broken down into categories of our Pierce County share. So metropolitan cities, I believe that is just Tacoma, right, Carl?
That's correct.
So you'll see at the top that Tacoma, you know, they're getting thirty-eight percent. You know, a hundred thousand, so core cities, and then there's high-capacity transit communities. And as Carl mentioned, we're in the cities and towns geography that gets seven percent of that total Pierce County allocation. For a total of eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty-five, and that is split between all of the cities that are within that. Um, cities and towns, and I think Carl has a list of those that he can read from.
Yeah, I've got it right here. So it's Bonnie Lake, Buckley, Arbonado, Eatonville, Edgewood, Gig Harbor, Milton, Portland. Pacific, Roy, Ruston, Southbury, Silicon, Wilson. Okay. Uh, so this is what our um growth looked like. It's kind of a really uh pared-down synopsis of what our growth looked like from two thousand to twenty twenty. So. Uh, under the former um. Population allocations, looking at up to twenty thirty, our planned growth rate for Gig Harbor was to be about two point nine nine percent. Between two thousand and twenty twenty, our average annual growth rate is two point eight. Uh, and then you can see two thousand, two thousand eight. So so what they did is they took all of it from two thousand to twenty twenty. And then because of the recession, they actually broke the data down a little bit more, wanted to look at what did it look like? Before the recession and then what did it look like when we came out of the recession? And so before the recession, you can see it was quite low. We were at point three percent in two thousand, two thousand eight, and the recession hit. And then after the recession was over, which they're saying is twenty fourteen. Uh, we had a spike in growth. We, yeah, five point nine percent.
And during the time that's not shown on here, the two thousand nine to twenty thirteen, there were many. Or some of those years were negative growth for the city as well, and they're not shown on here. But as Carl mentioned, just because of the significant event that happened during the last reporting period. The the data has been broken out into, again, the um. Kind of the pre-recession and then the post-recession. Because you don't want to base a trend, a future trend, on um extreme circumstances that may likely, hopefully, from the knock-on, would won't won't happen again.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so then the regional geography targets, okay, bear with me one moment here, because I, there was no way for me to show you this data um on a slideshow, so the only way to do it is to. To break into an Excel spreadsheet, so I've got that up, so I just need to unshare here.
Hey, Katrina?
Yes.
Is um. I I can't remember if the Department of Commerce or OFM um. We were waiting, they have they come out with their numbers? Or they gave them a blessing to PSRC's numbers?
So that's a good question. What we're doing here today with you, if I can answer the second question first. We want to put forward the data points that we have so far and kind of give the framework for the discussions that we're gonna continue to have. Um, we will not be giving a blessing, per se, a formal um approval of anything. For a while, and Carl, I mean, I think we have until the end of the year. And by then, we expect to have, as Carl mentioned, the OFM numbers. Come out to each county. Hopefully, I mean, they're supposed to be April first, but it may be a little bit delayed, as Carl mentioned. So we will make sure that we are not locked into something that is uh not in line with OFM's numbers. So we'll ensure that we're not inconsistent.
Can everybody's, oh, sorry.
Does that make sense, or can I clarify it more?
Yep.
Okay.
Can everybody see the spreadsheet here? That's showing showing up. Okay, good. Uh, okay, so this is the spreadsheet that was provided by um AHBL. Uh, who's the consultant that's working with Pierce County to go through this process. And um, this is what, this is, this is obviously the cities and towns, regional geographies, so here's our regional geography share up here at eighteen five three five, so that's kind of the. Magic number that we're trying to get to, and you can see all the towns are total for all of listed here. We've got the base year estimated population, so that's twenty twenty. We talked about that before, so our, so what we're working from. Is this eleven to forty number, and what we're working towards. Is, I have to scroll to the right. Get to, but what we're working towards is trying to figure out what this preliminary twenty forty-four population growth share. Uh, is what it looks like. We've got a few, I can actually take this out, because that's not accurate. But these numbers, so this, so this spreadsheet now, without that in there, I just put that there to see what the numbers. Without that there, that's exactly, this is the exact spreadsheet that was provided to us by AHBL. And so you can see here that a few cities have already started to chime in with some of their numbers. They've got, this this number was provided by AHBL, this non-policy-adjusted population forecast. Which is based on uh the uh base year, uh, as well as this non-policy-adjusted twenty forty-four population forecast. Um, and then the calculations and assumptions that go into coming up with those numbers, also based on this average persons per household. And it either will talk about it a little bit in a minute. Um, but. You can see that some cities such as Bonnie Lake. You can see that some cities such as Bonnie Lake, uh just use them as an example. They are told then that their uh adjusted or their adjusted growth is going to be 15,804 persons. Now, what they have suggested their number is going to be, and what they're proposing, their population growth share will be is 7,610. That equates to 2,589 housing units, which is based on, again, back to this PPH, H number, persons per household. Of 2.94. That then gets them to a growth rate here of 1.5% between 2020 and 2044. So you can see here on Gig Harbor's line that's highlighted, we've got our 2020, 2020 annual growth rate at 2.8%. That was on the slide that I showed formally, and then they've also shown this post-recession growth rate from 2014 to 20. Now, this percentage would be populated when we have a number that we've decided on here, this also housing unit growth share would also be populated. So I'm going to, at that, at this point, I'm going to stop sharing here, we can come back to the spreadsheet when you get into the discussion, if that's okay? And I think I'm going to stop sharing, finish the slideshow, and then come back, and we can discuss a little more, does that sound okay, or?
Let's let's clear a couple of numbers up, so that we're all on the same page here. On the the population capacity, that's based on some buildable lands report or something, I assume.
That's true, yeah, it is.
So you add that to the 11,000, take the 4,123, add it to the 11,240 that you started with, and that's where that 15,888 comes from, correct?
Uh, well, approximately, I don't know that actually, but that's.
It's gotta be.
Pretty, pretty close, yeah.
Shy, it's shy, but it's close, okay, uh, okay.
This is taking into, this population capacity is taking into account, if you read it up here, it's taking into account absorbed housing, surplus housing. Which are numbers um that are relative to uh what we were um. What we were allocated for in the 2030 planning um timeline. And so they're 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 taking all of that into account, uh as well as the current buildable lands data.
Okay.
Uh, and then taking out the base year housing units, and then multiplying that again by this average PPH now.
Okay.
We get to our, what what would they assume our capacity is? Again, this is, a lot of this, you know, there's, there's a lot of inputs and assumptions that go into this um into this data.
Okay. Yeah, council member advantage.
Yeah, boy, I wish I would have had this, this, this is the meat and potatoes right here, um. So who does the, because the housing units seem to have a direct cor- correlation looking at discharge with the persons per household? calculation.
That's, that is true, council member advantage, and that's something that Carl and I want to bring up to the committee today, and something that we're continuing to work on. That um, one of the reasons why we don't have a recommendation for the committee yet. If you look under column M on the spreadsheet that Carl is sharing, um, you'll see the persons per household. And so that is a um, basically an assumed average of each dwelling unit within the city, how many people live within the units on an average. Uh, if you're looking at that, that column, you'll note that Gig Harbor is at 2.16. And you'll note that we are much lower than everyone else on this list. That is something that Carl and I have flagged.
Okay, well, who who came up with that number?
That, Carl and I were looking at that before the meeting, and Carl, if you want to explain it, I can.
Uh, well, it was, it was, it was brought up, or it was calculated by HBL using 2019 buildable lands data. Uh, and assumptions, so they used a calculation based on 2019 buildable lands numbers uh to come up with that. We've come up with that number, now again, it's a, it's a, it is an assumption based on um the data that they have on hand.
But buildable land has nothing to do, that that has nothing to do with persons per household.
So essentially, a very, very, very elementary breakdown of how they did this, because again, it's a complicated um equation. But there, they looked at the total population of our city and then occupied dwelling units and did a calculation, ultimately, very basic. Um, what, just anecdotally, um. Gig Harbor has traditionally been, you know, say quote unquote, because we know that not, not all things are absolute, but a retirement community where. There's a lot of one and two person households within the city. Also, what we know is that recently, we have a lot of development, um McCormick Creek neighborhood up in Harbor Hill. Where many of the homes are occupied by not just one or two people, but by families. And so one of the big asterisks is that, if that's a word, uh, that we want to point out here today. Is we are going to continue to drill into our persons per household to see if that is actually accurate. The 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 data is based on an American Community Survey, which statistically tends to be within 5 to 10% of actual. Uh, as a whole, however, it's not as laser sharp as an actual census count. And so what we don't want to happen is assume a low persons per household and have um thereby a need for more housing units.
That's what I'm getting at, is that number is critical in the end calculation.
It is, and so one of the things that Carl's going to do, and one of the main takeaways, we wanted to um let the committee know today. Is that until we can dial down and feel comfortable with our persons per household assumption, we're not going to be able to give. An assumed number of either people or dwelling or housing units. Um, for this chart until we have a better understanding of our persons per household, because it is such an important factor to determining. Um, the the density and size of both of our city and our urban growth area.
Well, I I absolutely, uh, and and what does non-policy adjusted mean?
So non-policy adjusted, it means that it is actual, like the. It's data, it's just straight data put into geographies, there's no assumptions that go into it, such as um like. Persons per household assumptions, or um any of the other. Uh, not explaining this very well, but there's a lot of different policy assumptions that are made. You know, either if it's multifamily or single family or a person per household, it's just actual numbers into geographies on a macro scale.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I was going to say, for instance, if uh, you know, we changed, uh, we we uh made a large amendment to our zoning code or our land use map. That would be a, that would be a major policy adjustment that would not account for, that would not be accounted for here. You're just taking, you're just taking the numbers, you're extrapolating them straight across the board based on um growth percentages and assumptions uh with those growth percentages.
Right, and I also might add, you know, two years ago, we were at 2.1 households. Um, and we had gotten higher because of younger families coming in. And I believe I saw, you know, a year ago, we were at 12,500, so I bet we're closer to 13,5 to 14, if you took this year, which is always lagging behind.
Well, that that could be good or bad, depending on what we can get credit for.
Well, and it would be good for Levin to know, because, I mean, in about a month, we should get next year's census count.
Um. I I do want to say, I feel very. I don't feel, the the 11,240 number is pretty concrete.
Really?
Yeah.
To up to, up to like last year or so?
Yeah, at probably the end of 2019. I will say, and to go with what the mayor's talking about, we do have, we know, oh, we can calculate the amount of folks that have moved into our city. Relative to our, the permits that we've submitted, so there is this, again, the lag that Carl and I are working on to kind of bring the data up to um the base year. But from the the base on here, I, we should feel very confident in the 11,240. Although I do agree both with Councilmember Franch and the mayor that the 2.16 persons per household and how that calculation is done. Carl and I do not feel um, without more information and analysis, we cannot get behind. For sure, that we would support a 2.16 persons per household.
So, uh, Carl?
Yes.
Wh- what, you know, just looking at Bonnie Lake, because you know, they got, I I don't know what it's called, now Talacoa, that planned community development up there?
Mm-hmm.
So, right now, according to this, they have 21,390, right?
Yes.
Okay, and they have a capacity going to column N, what they have a. A populate, a capacity of uh buildable land, so to speak, of 46, 49?
Eighty-six, forty-nine.
Okay, and then how does that, how does that next number, that 37,194? How does that interplay with the 21 uh 390?
This number is the, it would be their, would be their non-policy adjusted population forecast based on um. A, an average annual growth rate, so I believe that this number is taken from um using growth rates that have already been utilized. And actually, this, right, and not been utilized, but that they've actually seen between 2000 and 2020. Um, this comes from, this data comes from uh non-policy adjusted population, this comes from a table. And I'd have to find for you, it might be in this spreadsheet.
Well, tha- that's okay, I I'm just wondering, uh, i- if you add that number of the 21,390. And the 15,000, which is in column P, that gets you to the 37,000.
Correct.
Okay, so then, how does column O, column O shouldn't column O be higher?
Should it be higher?
Shouldn't it be 15,000?
For, for Bonnie Lake?
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not following, I'm sorry, Councilmember Franch.
Well, they they they've got a population forecast of it, of increase of growth of 15,840. Or eight oh four.
Eight oh four.
Right, so that that's what they're, uh, that's, that's where they assume their population is going to be in. Increase but in 20, by 2020, or 2044.
That's the number of persons it would increase by, and the total, then, their total population then for 2044 would be the 37,194. So if you take the 15,804 plus their base year estimated population, you get to 37,194.
So if I did the multiplication of the seven, 7,610 by the average persons per household, I'd come up with that 15,000 number?
Uh, that should be, that should be right. Let me do that really quick.
Okay, well, that 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 shows you how critical that persons per household number is in your population allocation. Or your um dwellings that you need to plan for.
Yeah, and I have, I have a slide later in the PowerPoint where we've kind of looked at our pipeline. And looked at what they're giving us for the base, you know, for this baseline, uh, base year estimated population. Um, and then kind of carrying that through, what that would, what that would look like, just knowing what we know on the ground right now. So taking, thinking is, taking assumptions out of it, other than using the 2.16. Uh, and the other data that they've provided us, but just looking at, all right, here's our base pop, base year population. Uh, and then here's what we know are coming online, as far as households, or sorry, as far as housing units, uh, and then. And then getting to a population number using that 2.16. So you do have to kind of bring households into this when you're talking about a 2.16, obviously, because in one unit, 2.16 people.
So is is there, I thought there were 17 cities and small towns, this this list represents 14.
Uh, though there you, well, uh, Sumner was taken out, Sumner was moved into uh a different, I've got that here.
High capacity transit.
Yeah, they were moved into high capacity transit communities, which is a new geography, so they did change the geographies from Vision 2040 to Vision 2050. Right, so we've got new.
Okay.
They have new geographies, and they jumbled some things around, Sumner, um, and I think. Uh, Wallow was moved, there's, there's a bunch of them that were moved since, you know, from from before, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Well, it sounds like uh under P, under Q, that is where, that's where the negotiations are all going to take place, because somehow among these 14 cities. The total needs that up to 18,356, is that right?
Uh, 535, actually, 18,535 is what we're, you know, what we're trying to get to. Uh, and and again, note that this says preliminary 2044 population growth share, because, and they're, they're saying that uh because. We still uh have more information that needs to be um synthesized. To go into these equations to make sure that we're right, and and of course, you know, when the OFM numbers come out and the county chooses that low, medium, high. Population forecast, then these numbers need to fit with what, within whatever that is, that right now, they're making an assumption. Because Pierce County has chosen medium in the past, they're making an assumption that Pierce County is going to choose medium again. And so that's where, that's where a lot of the basis for these numbers uh and assumptions come from.
The the numbers in that highlighted column there, those were provided by the city, or they were provided by the county?
These were provided by each jurisdiction individually, so these, every, everything else, just Q and R. Uh, well, R is a, is calculated once you put something in to you, but. U is where, you know, people are kind of throwing, throwing this number. Out, and it's getting in, it's getting put into this table, and then we're kind of seeing where we end up, and then once they see where we end up. Which you can see where it, you know, already, with just the jurisdictions that are provided data, we're already at 18,356, so. You know, we're almost to the, to what we're trying to reach already, without Gig Harbor having put anything in, and, you know.
Clear.
And we are, you know, 14, 15% of the total regional geography. So we're, you know, we're a big, we're kind of a big player in this little pool here.
Here, Heinz, I just want to do a time check, we have about 30 minutes left for the remainder of the agenda.
Yeah, let's just keep, uh, I I I think we're um, I think we're just about the end of this, right Carl, or do we?
Yeah, let me, yeah, let me run back to the um, my PowerPoint presentation really quick.
Okay.
Finish that up, and then we can move on, sorry, that took a minute.
Well, that that's important stuff there, and could you forward me that, Carl, please?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, in fact, I I think all the members of committee would probably like one, that's, that's, yeah, that's the one you you kind of scratch your head over.
Okay. All right, am I back, you can see the screen again?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so moving on then, so this, this was the calculation that I was talking about, so. And I wish it, it would have probably been more helpful to show this kind of side by side, but looking at that other slide, but it's kind of, it's just hard to do um spreadsheet would fit, so. What, this is kind of just an example of of some math that we could do to help us kind of figure out what um, what that. Ultimately, what that growth rate should be, or that that growth rate that we're comfortable with. So in our current permit pipeline, we have about 447 dwelling units, and so these are uh flats that have been, have been preliminarily approved. And we assume will be coming in for final flat um, and or their uh site plans that have been approved, that we assume will be built out at some point. Um, and so we've come up with this 447 dwelling units that we think we have in the pipeline. Uh, we have our baseline, base year population of 11,240 that we've been talking about. We have this base year 2020 persons per household of 2.16, which you see, we have an asterisk next to, because uh staff is still looking into that. Uh, and then we have, so if you take that 447 dwelling units, times your 2.16. And then we have, so if you take that four hundred and forty seven dwelling units, times your two point one six, you get nine hundred and sixty six people. So if we add that nine hundred and sixty six to this eleven two forty, which is kind of getting to the point, I think some. Were trying to make earlier, in that this eleven two forty is not entire, maybe not entirely accurate, it is accurate. At that point in time, it is a number that, that is, that is accurate, but if we add in what's, what's happening. Now, or what we know is going to be happening within the next few years, we think we get to about twelve thousand two hundred and six fulls for that baseline. Um, and so if we plug that twelve hundred, twelve thousand, two hundred and six back into that spreadsheet in our base year column. That increases, uh, we get these, these conclusions, and these would be this thirty, three thousand, six hundred and eighty two. Would be the number that would uh go into the red column, and all of the jurisdictions are uh. Putting their, their population numbers into, or their forecasts into, and then that spits out uh, or it equates to. One thousand, seven hundred and six housing units, and in that scenario, our growth, our annual growth rate. Somewhere in the realm of one point three percent. Remember, before we were at uh, over the last twenty years, we've been at an average of about two point eight.
And to highlight the importance of the persons per household here, because I don't think it can be understated in this conversation. If that persons per household were to be two point five, let's say, so two point five persons per household, if we multiplied that. By our dwelling units, instead of nine hundred and sixty six population, we would be at one thousand, one hundred and eighteen. With a, so that's a difference of a hundred and fifty one people. So, you know, it doesn't seem like very much perhaps in the scheme of things, but if. We're making an assumption based on a low persons per household, that could have, you know, ramifications for how many new units or how large are UGA guys. And so that's one of the key pieces of information, again, that we feel that we need to look into prior to making a recommendation. Um, to the committee and to administration on how we proceed.
Okay.
Uh, and, and then I, yeah, that's it, so further discussion if we wanted to have some, um. Or otherwise, I'm, you know, I'm happy to uh send that information, all this information that we've gone over out to. The committee uh and the mayor, um, for further uh review and discussion later.
Given, given the time element, I think that would be great, send it out, and if there's any. Uh, follow on questions that develop as a result of reviewing that material, we can put that as an agenda item on our next meeting.
Good.
I, I would just like to uh thank Katrina and Carl, I, I wasn't on this committee. I haven't never been on this committee, and I don't know how in-depth um the past administration. Uh, got with this information, but I'm very thankful that you guys are taking the time to run this through. Committee, because this is a pretty big deal, and I think that if. This kind of exercise was done under the last administration, and I'd like to thank Kit, because I think he might have something to do with um. Putting this forward through us as well, um, it's just, it's really nice to be involved in this. Very important part of the process, so thank you. Councilmember Markley.
Yes, thank you, I was gonna say the same thing, just a big thank you to um. Katrina and Carl for putting this together, and also to the mayor for um. Just bringing this to our attention and having us be able to be involved in this. Um, and then you said you'd have, you're gonna have a better understanding of those numbers at our March meeting, right? When you, uh, once we have the, i- is it the county, the county planner, is that who's gonna be joining us, or a county planner?
Yeah, Jessica Will will be coming from the county, and she's, she's gonna be going over um. It's, it's related to this, but it's uh, but it's separate um, in what she's actually managing, so it's more the buildable land side. Of things, but it does, it does, it all, it all interplays, and she actually asked me if it was useful, if she. Uh, in her presentation sort of tied it back to um this, this target uh setting, or, or, I said absolutely. All the information we can get, we will take, so um, that's what we're, that's what we're really hoping for, so I think that'll be really helpful. And then in the meantime, um, I'm actually gonna be meeting with the cities and towns geography again here. Um, and there's gonna be some more discussion about those, um, those population numbers. Uh, and then there will be another, another GMCC meeting, um, that will take place. Sorry, Growth Management Coordinating Committee, which is under that, one of those um committees under the ECRC. Uh, and we'll be talking about this stuff as well, and that, as well as the countywide planning policy update.
And the primary thing that we want to be able to bring to the committee again in March, we have these preliminary numbers that we've just shared. Uh, the, the other piece of information or the key piece that we want to bring into this conversation regarding growth targets. Will be the persons per household findings that we come up with over the next month. Uh, you know, we have a pretty good idea, our handle on our pipeline information, our pipeline data, we have a pretty good handle on. Um, the growth rates of twenty twenty through, two thousand through twenty twenty, and really, the persons per household is the final, I think. Key element that we need in order to make our professional recommendation to the committee and administration for our future growth rate.
Okay, uh, like I see more hands up, uh, Councilmember Franch, I'll swing right across the top here. Yeah, so you, when you're having this meeting that you were talking about next week, you're not gonna be making any commitments to that. The other towns or where we're gonna fall?
No.
Okay.
I think, I think Katrina and I have had some discussion about this, and the, and there's no, you know, there's no. We don't want to, we don't feel comfortable enough to be making any commitment to any, any kind of number, um. Yeah, I think I'll just, I'll just, I'll leave it there, so we'll, we'll bring back that information, um.
Okay, Mayor.
Yeah, and I, I want to thank staff, I want to thank Michelle, Katrina, Kim, and Carl, you know, it's, it's uh very discouraging um. Seeing what they're reporting on, because of what Pierce County is trying to do. So, um, the corrections, and we're kind of jumping ahead, but the corrections that Carl has laid out. Um, the future land use of UGA for Purdy. And various changing of wording that, you know, they're just trying to tell us what they're gonna do. And we are correcting their comp plan, because they're wanting to basically sell us off, really. And it's bullshit, sorry, but it really is, and so we may have to get more aggressive. With Pierce County, and I think we will, and I've also told Katrina that we're here, ready to, ready to jump in, and. It's, it's wrong, it's wrong for them to be, you know, the whole CIPA thing they're trying to bypass, and, you know, um. They're gonna discharge onto more wetlands, and they, I don't like what, what Pierce County is doing, and so we need to get much more. Much closer to them than we are.
Yep. Okay, great, okay, in the time that we have left, uh Katrina. I, I guess I, I'm gonna ask you, from a priority standpoint, what should go next? That we have to cover, and what could possibly be deferred if we run out of time, which we probably will.
I think that the last agenda item just went over at the retreat, so I think we can drop that one off if the committee is okay with that. You saw me, I went through the presentation of our pri- work priorities.
Okay, and we can just push that to the, to the March meeting, I assume.
Yeah, we'll give you an update on where we are.
Okay, so I'll leave it to you, we've, we've still got the item three and item four then.
That's correct, and I will, uh, we just have one more item, I believe, and that's the, um, we look at my agenda. The Pierce County Comprehensive Plan Amendment Update, and Carl, we'd like Carl to provide the committee. An overview of the comments that we've made so far on the comprehensive plan, their comprehensive plan applications.
Okay, great.
Started talking before I muted, I apologize, uh, thank you, um, so I have a. PowerPoint presentation that I've prepared that I had given to the planning commission recently, um, they really liked it. It, it's, it's real, kind of gets pretty in-depth, uh, talks about community plans, um, and talks about all of the amendments. I'm happy to go through that PowerPoint again with you all, or I could take questions, we can talk about. Um, the, um, the actual individual items that they might have concerns with. Um, or I could read through the comments that we provided on the um, Peninsula Community Plan. I just don't know that, I, I guess my point is, I'm not sure I'm gonna get through it all in, uh, in fifteen minutes, so I'm happy to do however you like.
Okay, from, from your standpoint, which one would be higher priority? Going through of some of the proposed amendment actions, okay? Uh, Pierce County Amendment Actions specifically, or going through your, your uh, information?
But, let me hit the, how about this, but let me hit the hi- the highlights of my presentation. I'll go through and hit a couple of things that I think are important.
Okay.
And then we'll, and then we'll turn it into a discussion from there, if that, that pleases everyone.
That's great.
While Carl's pulling this up, I'll fill the space here just in time, uh, the mayor mentioned a CIPA discussion that we're having with the county. And that is regarding projects that have been given a CIPA exemption. Um, within our urban growth area, something that we have been speaking with the county. Uh, about, we feel that they may have misapplied on several projects. I'll keep you updated uh as that moves forward, but I just wanted to briefly mention that that's one of the items that we're looking at. And that really gets to, we heard from the planning commission and from the planning and building committee and other council members, that they'd like us to be more involved, and the mayor as well. That we need to get a, uh, become more involved with the planning that's going on in our urban growth areas, surrounding areas, and we've done that. Carl, it will be going over the comprehensive plan applications, we've had um. Kim Mahoney, an associate planner, she's been reviewing several of the plots that are being proposed in the urban growth area. And she has provided comments to the um, hearing examiner and the local um. Uh, planning commission as well, and so that's what the mayor is referring to, that we are becoming involved both on a policy level. As well as on a project level, and we're happy to keep you updated on that at your next meeting.
Great, okay, Carl, you're ready to go?
Okay, here we go, so uh, twenty twenty one Pierce County Comprehensive Plan, Gig Harbor Peninsula Community Plan Amendments. Um, first, a little bit of background information here, um, and I think the most important piece. Uh, bullet here is that, to note that Pierce County Comprehensive Plan Docket includes twenty five proposed amendments. So we're really only talking about just, you know, four to five that sort of affect. Uh, the city of Gig Harbor, and of course, really just the, the urban growth areas, city of Gig Harbor. And a little more background in case others didn't know, um, there are. Uh, several of these community plans throughout the county, um, and we are just one of, I think there's fourteen, thirteen or fourteen. Sorry, eleven here, um, so just something to keep, you know, in the back of your mind, and these, these community plans. Are a part of the Pierce County Comprehensive Plan, this is the, this map shows the boundaries of the uh Peninsula Community Plan. Which was adopted back in two thousand and two, and this is a, an important uh point, when we have this discussion. And something that I've talked with the Pierce County um planner who's working on these amendments. Uh, about, and, and it's that they are, they are um updating this community, this Peninsula Community Plan, but they're not overhauling. It's like a community plan, and so, because it was adopted so long ago, and it really has not been touched much since then. Um, there was a, there was a want and desire from the council, as well as the um. Peninsula Advisory Com- uh Committee out here. Uh, to make some, make some adjustments, make some tweaks, and just kind of bring it up. Uh, so these are the proposed amendments that um, that I have an overview of here, uh, just four of them, those are the application numbers from Pierce County. Uh, this first one, nine three nine, seven nine zero is a area-wide map amendment, and you should all, you'll all be familiar with these. As uh, they were presented to you, I think, a couple of months ago by the counties, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna harp on them too much here, I'm gonna kind of just. Breeze over them a little bit, but this is the twenty twenty one proposed area-wide map amendment for, in that parks and performance golf center. Uh, redesignating it to a um, to a parks and rec designation from a rural ten. Similar, similarly, this is the McCormick. Um, uh, over on Musich Road, the. Rotary Dog Park, I believe, is uh what the land use is there currently. Um, and this is actually just outside of our UGA, so none of these are actually within our UGA, but they are. At least the first two are more interesting to Gig Harbor, obviously, they have some, it may have some impact, depending on how they were developed. This is out at the uh Rosedale Baseball Park, um, at proposing the same thing. Uh, likely to be used for parking lot, we had some discussion about that at the last meeting. Uh, and then just really quickly, uh, what rural five and rural ten is, and what parks and recreation is. Land use perspective, uh, so here's another one, this is nine four zero, three, three, seven. Designating two parcels in the Harbors, it's a gay plan area from employment center to a mixed use district, now this one. We have had a lot of discussion about, there's definitely some concern uh about this one, this is up in the Purdy neighborhood, this is at the. Uh, the furthest north extent of our urban growth area, uh, so it is within the urban growth area. Uh, they're proposing a future use here, the applicant, as a contractor's yard. Um, and I think we, you know, we discussed this at the, the last time we discussed, uh, and. Both the, the county and the city are unsupportive of this amendment, and that has been the recommendation going forward. I attended the Peninsula Advisory Committee's uh meeting on this, they also recommended denying this application. So the likelihood is that it won't, it won't push forward. Uh, this is just an overview of employment center and mixed use, uh, so this was one that was, I do not believe was brought to you previously. Uh, and this is nine four zero, one, seven, two, Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment, this amendment would affect. How the county calculates density in the urban residential areas, and so affecting the urban growth areas specifically. Now, before I, before I get into it too much, though, I do want to say, so we were tracking this, we had a lot of discussions, uh, I had some discussions with. Both at the county, uh, since that time, though, and since I gave this presentation to the planning commission. The Pierce County Council has chosen to uh uninitiate this amendment, so they have taken this amendment off of the initiated. Uh, amendments docket, so it's not going forward, that said, they are still, uh. They are still um evaluating the amendment under CIPA. Uh, which they had issued a, a determination of significance. Uh, and they had sent out a request for comments uh on the scoping of that environmental impact statement. And staff did, we did provide comments on that, the debate or comments was last Friday. So we did give them a, a list of comments on, on that that will remain in the record. Uh, in case they decide to take this forward and continue to evaluate uh the environmental impacts of such an amendment. Um, and potentially discuss it, um, you know, future legislation around this amendment, so we'll, we'll. Well, it remains to be seen what happens, but uh, the city of Gig Harbor is on record uh not supporting.
This is a, this is a big one, tha- tha- that could undo everything we've done for the last couple of years.
Yeah, it has a lot of implications, and, and luckily through CIPA, they recognized that, you know, and so that. The, the process worked uh in this case, so this was the proposed amendment. Um, uh, basically changing their calculation from a net developable acreage, using a gross developable acreage. So you would not remove um environmentally constrained areas or roads, things like that. Exactly opposite of how we calculate density in the city, uh, and opposite of how they calculate density in the urban growth areas. Uh, and then finally, this, this is the one that we'll probably have some discussion about here, this is nine four oh, one, six, three, is that community plan. Amendment, um, so updating background information is fast, the Gig Harbor Peninsula Community Plan. Uh, coordinating land use and infrastructure planning, UGA and Purdy, uh, amendment suggested by the Land Use Advisory Commission. Including an unlimited tree preservation policy, so they made a few changes there as well, and in my slideshow, my presentation here, I just kind of go over. A couple of these uh changes that I think most everybody here is probably aware of, where these changes, this. These were the goals and actions um, here around the uh Purdy commercial area that were actually. Drafted and put into the plan, now I think when this was presented to you previously, didn't have, this language wasn't um all ironed out exactly yet, so. Didn't have, this language wasn't um all ironed out exactly yet, so hopefully you've had some time to take a look at it. Um and see, you know, what you think, but these, these first three bullets are the goals around that pretty commercial area. Um and then the ID two point seven is actually um an action item that they have in there, that they have in their plan. So that's how they have their plan organized in such a way that there's goals laid out and then a list of action items.
These are goals for the county, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because there's a lot of work in there, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Uh and I should say, maybe this is a good time to just stop and say that I, I believe that I provided uh. Council members with um with our comments that we had provided to, to the county. On this subject or on all on on this community plan update uh and.
What, is that on that uh? Uh I I didn't get that unless you're talking about the one that you sent to that Jessica Nappy.
Yeah, that's correct. That's number Franch, yeah, so it was, it was an email that we had sent uh with our, with our comments on the plan.
Yep, dated January twentieth.
January twentieth, correct.
Carl, could you also send them the scoping comments on the?
Yep.
The density change?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, let me uh let me continue on here and then we can have a quick discussion so I don't take up too much time, I'm already ten minutes into my slideshow here, let me. Continue on, so these are a couple more goals uh that were related, that were, that were added to the plan. So the reason that I focused in on means to present is because like we said at the beginning, uh this was really. The the goal here, overall goal for the plan from the county's perspective and from the Minnesota Advisory Committee's perspective, was really to just update the plan. That's what they initially went into this for, or to do. Now, as the the Peninsula Advisory Committee started looking into it more, they said, wow, we should do something with trees too. And so they wanted to add in a little bit of language about proposing trees uh and which trees should be uh preserved. Um and which shouldn't, and so they they wanted to add a little bit of language that way now. Um when the council started looking at it is when the the Purdy amendment was added in. Um and so that wasn't part of the original plan. So again, they're, they're not trying to overhaul. The the plan, they're really just trying to, they really wanted to just update it and then tweak it at the fringes, so. Just wanted to throw that, throw that in there. Uh so the the PAC heard three of these four proposed amendments at this meeting December twelfth. Uh then I gave a little bit of background on who the PAC is because it's not really kind of a widely known group. I don't think a lot of people even living out here understand who they are, what they necessarily, so um a little background in there, there it's a. Um just part, part of their process, like a planning commission.
Hey Carl, what, what, it said three of the four, which one didn't they?
They didn't look at the uh the density calculation, that was not on the, and I think that that one was newer, I think that's why. Because we didn't even know about that until recently and I'm not, I don't know if it was even on my radar until I got the E I S.
Yeah, that's why, it sounds like that one's dead for now anyway, so.
I believe so, yeah. Uh so uh the next steps in this process, the Pierce County Planning Commission now will take up these issues, they're gonna be reviewing these. Uh applications, uh they will not be reviewing the density application, which I still have on this slide. Because as I said, that's kind of new information since I created this slideshow. Uh and the planning commission is to take action on these amendments on February tenth, at which time then they will. Uh give their recommendation to the Pierce County Council by um February fifteen. And so now we're in, now we can get into some discussion here, hopefully I.
Well.
I, if I may, I'd like to just note that Carl did testify to the Pierce County Planning Commission, I believe, I can't see it now because it's so small, but. I think it's the twentieth of, was it twentieth of January?
Yes, the twentieth.
And he, and it was essentially the email that you have. From Carl to Jessica Nappy are the comments that were provided and that was on the the community plan as a whole. And so we've participated in each of the opportunities afforded us as of today.
Okay. All right, is there any other discussion on this item?
Yeah.
You got, you got one minute.
Um did, can we get a copy of what the uh PAC recommendations were?
Uh I think so, I'll have to look and see if there's actually um anything in writing. Uh I, but I will, I will find that for you if there is something, or it might just be, or if it's just a recording, I don't exactly know how they. How they do that, or if they just put it, or if their staff just puts it into their staff report what the PAC's recommendation was, I'm not exactly sure, but I can certainly get that for you.
Okay, and you know, I've got some real problems with this uh, this whole Purdy deal um. Especially, a- as you said, the the first two bullet points are goals and. These, the two point seven is talking about implementation.
Yes.
And this in, they they talk about implementation strategy. And you know, if that stays in the U G A, that could have severe uh ramifications. For the city in as far as cost of implementing whatever ideas they come up with.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, Councilmember Franch, and and I actually had a discussion um with Jessica Nappy, who's their senior uh long-range planner, who's. Who's uh managing this application and uh Dan Cardwell, who's their long-range planning manager. And we discussed some of that, some of those types of concerns and one of the things that uh Katrina and I were, were interested in was. Getting some uh language into those action items uh relative to working with. The city of Gig Harbor, when and if they go forward with those action items, because we're gonna be working on this uh U G A and annexation analysis. So we're going to have significant data uh that's gonna be relative to that area. We're gonna have some significant action items of our own that may come out of that study. And so we uh we have voiced that concern and they have, they have responded and said that they're, they will be uh looking into adding that language. And they bring this to their uh planning commission at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, Carl. I think we're right at five o'clock right now and I think uh. Uh councilmember Markley has got to exit at this point, so if this is a good point to saw off, I would suggest that we saw off right here. And take the things that we didn't get to, uh particularly, I think it's item number three and number five. And uh put them on the agenda for our next gathering unless there's some emergency.
Number times, we addressed number three as number one with Joshua, so we just need to bump item number five.
Okay.
And then I believe that we would have then a continuation of um the growth discussion and then. Um Jessica Gilt from Pierce County will present to the committee on the Buildable Lands Report Progress.
Okay, great. Okay, with that, see now it's, we're past time by one minute, by my clock. Uh if, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh move to adjourn. I don't know where councilmember Franch went. I think he might have, I think he might have dropped off the call.
Okay, second forum and then Tracy and I will agree unanimously that the meeting is adjourned, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good, good meeting and thank you, Carl. Uh very, very enlightening and the uh. Jim's point on the Purdy thing is really um, I I believe relevant. Uh we've looked at that map several times and I've never seen. A land use that looked like that before, sitting on a body of water. That was the most unusual thing I've ever seen. Everything from um mixed use was all over the place. Uh we had residential, we had uh. Employment district, we had a whole series of things and they're all in that area and I I'm sitting there. In fact, one of the questions off the record is, is.